Okay, call the November 9 meeting of Peterstownship Council to order. Roll call Mr. Lauer.
Mr. Bernal.
Present.
Mr. Spiegel.
Here.
Mr. Kerr.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
I ask for the pleasure of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes.
I'll move second.
Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports? I see none. Audience comments? We're still under COVID rules? We have any to read? None. Unfinished business? There is none. New business? Resolution authorizing appropriate township officials to enter into agreements with Washington County governing distribution of CARES funds.
So, there were, this is a second allocation of CARES funds that is coming to the township by way of Washington County. This allocation is intended to offset police and fire wages. The amount that's been allocated to Peterstownship is $150,095. We need a resolution authorizing the appropriate township officials to enter into an agreement with Washington County.
Move we adopt resolution number 11-01-20 authorizing the appropriate township officials to enter into an agreement with Washington County governing the distribution of CARES funds.
Second.
Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What's that bring the total to, Paul?
It would be, yeah, about $700,000. But again, we're going to have to be really talented like everybody else in Washington to be able to spend all those funds. With regard to this application, the application for this is already complete and will be sent in tomorrow along with the agreement.
Okay. Next item is award of a contract for Rolling Hills Park project.
So, bids for the Rolling Hills Park project were open on Thursday, October 29. There were seven bidders. What's on the screen is a tally of those bids. As you can see, the apparent low bidder is A. Liberoni. This is a contractor who has been working at this site. They have done both the first Rolling Hills Drive project as well as the second where we're doing the connection onto East McMurray Road. They were also the contractor that the school district used for the site development for the high school. We've had a really good relationship with them and their performance has been exceptional. So, we're pleased that the fact that they are the low bidder. In analyzing the bids, there was a feature in the great lawn. It was a play structure that was in the form of a treehouse. That came in at $465,000. And my recommendation that that be eliminated from the bid. The other thing that we did was to bid as an alternate a, the park maintenance facility, and that came in at a bid of $1,220,100. And that we are suggesting be included. The project itself, and we've talked about this previously, is in essence opening up the park. It creates the infrastructure upon which everything else will eventually be developed. It essentially includes this loop road that connects on both ends to Rolling Hills Drive. It develops this great lawned area. There is a recreational feature here. It's a wall that creates a gathering space. In addition, there are three pitting shelters. I think one of the most important features is that it provides this trail that goes down over the hill that gets you back to Arrowhead Trail. So, you know, from that perspective, it provides recreational opportunities as well as helping out the park. There is a, at this location, a park maintenance facility. That park maintenance facility consists of four bays and will allow us to store trucks and equipment needed to maintain the park. One of the things that was added to this is this wash bay. As you all know, we are attempting to comply with our, the mandates we have under MS4 with regard to protecting waterways. One of the things that we need is the ability to have some place to be able to clean trucks in an indoor facility where we can capture the, what comes off of them. So, there'll be a wash bay at this location. The building, as it faces into the park, well, excuse me, this is the other, this is the elevation that faces towards East McMurray Road. And all it consists of are four garage doors. As it faces into the park, there's, you know, an attempt to break it up by having some windows and different textures, materials at the top. And on that side, of course, there is this garage door which allows a pass through to be able to pull trucks through into that wash bay. The restroom facility is something that we've seen before. It's, it exceeds the mandates for ADA, but it is a very simple structure. It's, you know, it's got a pitch roof. It's got four doors and a number of restroom stalls and that, but there's nothing extravagant about the building.
The gas poof roof?
No, we're going to be using red metal roofs throughout the park trying to carry over that beam from Peterswood. This is a, an idea of the large pitting pavilion. There are two smaller pavilions. The pavilions all have this area as we have started to develop inside of Peterswood Park, which is an area for preparation of food and serving of food. This is an early Brent Green. Only these four corner posts are actually going to have these stone structures. The rest of these are just simply going to have poles down to them.
Looks like North Strabane.
You say it looks exactly like North Strabane.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, well, and again, that's what you're starting to see in Peterswood Park. We've converted to them to be able to provide this kind of area. This area is a bit more elaborate than what you would see in Peterfoot Park. So, I mean, that's, that's in essence the project. If you have questions, I can try to answer those.
You sort of indicate that Liberoni would not do the building. Have they announced a subcontractor?
They have not, and Mark was having a discussion with him today, and he had indicated us that that end of the project is so far away that one of the things that he hasn't even begun that selection process as to who he's going to use. The one thing that we had asked, and Liberoni is willing to engage with us on this, is that I'm concerned about how expensive the pavilions themselves are. And like I indicated before, Liberoni is somebody we've been able to work with before, and he had indicated that when he got to the point where he was actually choosing subcontractors for the buildings that he would entertain a discussion to find out whether there's some way to value engineer that to reduce those costs.
Well, and if I could just interject, I also asked Mr. Lauer about the buildings because of that comment about Liberoni and the fact if he's subcontracting, I'm sure he's adding, he's going to at some point, you know, at his markup. But, you know, we're building houses in Peters with, you know, four bedrooms and bathrooms and everything else for $550,000, and the pavilion has no walls. And I'm, you know, one of those, I was surprised at the price of the buildings. Now, as far as the maintenance building, the brine and wash base system, is that what's making the price closer to the million? Because that's one of the things Mr. Herson has been asking for a while.
Well, what that is, is simply a washer. It is something he's been asking for a while, and it's a deficiency that we have and has been pointed out to us. So, what this is, is actually a wash bay. And so, what it'll allow is the wash down trucks gather all the oil and separate it and all the grit and not have it go into the stream.
A million's just, it seems like an astronomical amount of money for a maintenance garage.
Actually, this is my opinion. I don't think that the maintenance garage is out of line. I don't think the restroom building is out of line based upon prior expenditures. Where I struggle is with the prices that we're seeing on these pavilions. Having said that, it's going to be my recommendation that we go ahead with this project in part because you do have a contractor that we know and can work with doing this project. The other thing to keep in mind, there's a million and a half dollars between the low bidder and the next low bidder, and I think we need to be able to take advantage of that.
Absolutely.
So.
And I'm not disputing that. I agree, and Liberoni should be low bidder if they're already mobilized. So, as far as your comment about them talking to subcontractors, will that be written into the contract if in fact those numbers are, can be value engineered down?
Well, I mean, let's see, in the contract is the ability to have change orders. I mean, we can make reference to having a discussion with them about that, but there's, if you award this bid, there's nothing that requires them to do that. But again, our experience with Liberoni is that they're willing to talk about various things to help projects along, and so I don't have a problem trying to write that in somehow.
Well, I think if they're agreeable with the.
Well, I'll move that we award the bid for the Rolling Hills Park project to A. Liberoni in a amount of $6,952,012, which includes the base bid, item 34 removed, and the add alternate bid accepted.
Second. Any other discussion?
Just one clarifying thing about the grants. There is a significant amount being covered by the grants?
I don't know whether I would call it significant. There was $320,000 that is.
The trail connector.
And what we intend to do, there's a playground that's to be included in this. They're providing in essence the base for that. It is not part of this bid. And that, whatever it is we're going to do for that other structure on the great lawn, we're going to go out and pursue a grant and be able to do that because I think you need something that's substantial, I think it's an opportunity where we can get help from elsewhere.
You're talking about like an architectural? What are you talking about?
What, I don't have a picture, but there was a large wooden structure that was to be on the other side of the great lawn, and it's just, it was very difficult in my mind to justify that expense. I think there are other opportunities where we can get more bang for our buck, but I also think it's an item where we can pull it out and pursue grant funding and get somebody else to pay for a significant portion of it.
One last question, Mr. Lauer, and this is on behalf of EQB.
Very.
They have recommended solar panels. That we look into that for some of the park project? Was that considered at all?
Actually, they had put me in touch with somebody who was a consultant in that area. We had a discussion about this aspect of the park, and he had suggested to me that this would not be appropriate for this, this portion of the park. Now, we have gotten far enough along on the full project to make, to have that same kind of discussion, so hopefully we'll be having that discussion.
You could report that back to EQB then, so they, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Next item is the award of a contract for aerial mapping.
So, the 2020 budget has the allocation of $50,000 for aerial mapping to the township. The last time we did a project like this was back in 2009, and as you can probably appreciate, much has changed over that, that time. The engineering department solicited proposals and reviewed those. There were 13 firms that responded to it. It is Mr. Zomitis and Mr. Lee's opinion, and I would share it with them, that Cetera International Incorporated at $35,300 is the lowest responsible bidder, and we believe that it would be appropriate to award the contract to them.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Favor?
Just a clarifying question, Mr. Chairman. Has this been negotiated, and is that a not to exceed number?
It's not been negotiated, but basically what you're doing tonight is offering us to negotiate a company, the chair, but that was another we asked for, was it not to exceed number? I can't see it going up from there.
So, should the motion be modified to authorize you to negotiate up to that amount?
Well, I think the motion should be is to enter into a contract and not to exceed $35,300.
Well, I'm satisfied with that modification.
Is that the motion?
So modified.
Second. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinance amending Peterstownship Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, Section 601, Commercial Wireless, and I guess all three of these items are.
These three items are all related, and so let me go through this and try to explain. The FCC, as we discussed at a public hearing, has changed the rules with regard to the deployment of wireless communication facilities. And as a result of that, we employ the services of Cohen Log Group, who has consulted in this area with us before, to look at our existing zoning ordinance to make sure that it's in compliance with the FCC regulations. So, what's in front of you tonight is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to do just that, to bring our ordinance compliance. As a practical matter, it changes very little because under, under our current zoning, the only place that new large towers are permitted are in the light industrial zone unless they are co-located on another structure in any other zone. Under this ordinance, none of that changes. Under our current ordinance, 5G small cell towers were permitted to be co-located on existing, on existing telephone poles, and that does not change. Under the federal regulations, small cell towers need to be treated as all other utilities. So, when you have a residential subdivision with underground utilities, the, this, you are permitted to restrict the construction of small cell towers in those neighborhoods, and that's what this ordinance does. Now, as we discussed before, you've got to understand, this is a balancing act in that to the extent that you do not construct poles like this in people's front yards, it means in many sections of Peterstownship, you will not have 5G, access to 5G technology. And so, you know, like I say, it's a balancing act between these type of towers being in people's front yards and having access to the latest technology regarding wireless communications.
What's the effective radius of these things?
It's hundreds of feet, but it is, you know, you would have all the, very many of these within a subdivision to be able to have 5G coverage. If you look in town and you start looking on telephone poles, like you go down to East McMurray Road towards the existing high school, and you look up, you will see a 5G cell tower there. So, you're starting to see these show up in various locations.
So, in a standard subdivision, then with 100-foot lots, you would essentially need one every three lots, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's something like that. It's three or four lots or something like that. So, what you would have is what, you know, you have in the older subdivisions. You would have poles on a regular basis. The only difference would be there would be no wires in between them, and you would have some, a structure that kind of looks like this. So, so in addition to the ordinance, there is a manual that establishes design standards. So, to the extent that any new poles are constructed, they would be very much like this. They would be a decorative pole as opposed to a wooden telephone pole with a 5G antenna on top of it.
Do we think in terms of requiring a streetlight in conjunction with that? Because there's been a commission request, I think, of street lighting neighborhood streets.
And to the, and again, when you look at these, they can show up in any one of these forms. So, if you had a location where you had a streetlight, you could augment that with a 5G cell tower.
No, I was thinking in terms of requiring with a 5G tower, that it also include a streetlight as an accommodation of our granting the request for the tower.
I, you could look at doing that, yes.
I don't completely understand all of what these things are, what the technology's to do, but it is my understanding to this point that as a standalone item, they don't really fulfill any function. You need the whole network to function. Has anybody got a better understanding of it?
Well, I think individual downloads, if you have access to a tower, significantly increased.
Yes, but it would only work within 200 or 300 feet of the tower.
So, that, that benefit would be to a resident that would be within 300 feet of this tower?
You could download, but in terms of its navigational capabilities and.
For auto-driving vehicles? Absolutely not. I don't even know how it's practical on an interstate basis. But I'll leave my eyes to be opened.
They're metal? These things are made out of metal?
Well, yeah, what, I mean, what this is, is a metal street pole.
Aren't they like big lightning rods? I mean, isn't there a concern that like, you know, those are going to get struck?
I don't think it's any different than that light post that's behind it.
Well, I don't have any light posts in my neighborhood.
You'd have to be grounded in some way, wouldn't you?
Absolutely. It's a big thing.
So, the final aspect of this is a resolution, I mean, an ordinance that establishes of the, the FCC had determined that it is reasonable that there be a permit fee as well as an administrative fee for these facilities, and they pretty much have defined what that is, and the ordinance here mimics that, which is provided for. Is this a one-time?
Permit fee.
It's a one-time permit, but it's an annual, it's an annual administrative.
So, to clarify the question about residential, on the chart on page 61 in the document where it has administrative approval under the residential district, that would be what would have to happen if they're co-located small wireless onto something else that existed because not every plan is standalone. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So, we'll pan, and just to digress a second, one of the things we have been approached with is AT&amp;T wanting to use the, one of the light standards inside of Peterfoot Park for the purposes of establishing a, a cell tower at that location, which I think would be an excellent thing because quite frankly, as you get over towards the Public Works Garage, there is no cell service.
Now, do these, do these things work such that if you put a tower like this up on your property, do you have to keep trees a certain distance away, or do they have to be a certain distance away from dogs or something in order for the signal to work?
Well, I think, one with regard to trees, trees are a problem because they, you know, even, even on a normal cell tower, they're always going to be above the trees. But for the most part, the restrictions for a distance for homes and things like that have more to do with the desire of homeowners to have them for growing.
Any other discussion?
They need vehicle maintenance to be able to have access and service them, is that?
I would, I would assume that. One of the things that I think is an opportunity in Peterstownship, and we're going to try to look into this, I think where people object to these is having them in the front yards. You know, one of the things of Peterstownship, there's so many plans that have open space behind people's homes. One of the things I was curious about is whether or not there was a way to be able to take advantage of that open space and place them in the rear of people's properties.
That would be the access question.
Yes, that's the access question, yeah.
And you're still going to need one every 300 feet?
Well, that's today's technology. I'm not convinced that something has to be significantly better than.
You could actually stack, you could put one on this side of the street, and it wouldn't be, like, you know, so you wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be like a whole.
Well, we're talking about a whole bunch of things. Is anybody going to take any action here?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 857, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, Section 601, Commercial Wireless Communication Facility.
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sure as you like to.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 11-02-20, adopting the Peterstownship Small Wireless Communication Facility Design Manual.
Second. Discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You're on a roll. Keep going, Frank.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 858, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances, Chapter 195, fees establishing fees related to the permitting and administration of wireless communication facilities.
Second.
Discussion?
He's a lawyer, he can speak.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
With one branch.
Okay. Paul, would it be possible sometime, not too far distant, to get somebody from either one of these companies or somebody who deals with these towers to come in and just give us a little tutorial on?
Absolutely.
On this, because I think it would play into our understanding of design concept as we move forward, like backyard, front yard, you know, where we might space these things. Okay, thank you. Payroll and bills?
Mr. Chairman, in the current AP run, we have three larger payments for infrastructure projects, $450,000 to Liberoni for Rolling Hills Drive, $13,000 to Mackin for design work on the park, and $21,000 to SARSIC for storm drain work. The rest are routine operating expenses. I've reviewed these bills and the pay report and move they be paid as presented.
Second.
Other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence? Anything we need to talk about there, Mr. Lauer?
A couple things. First, there's an email in here from Brian Walker, and the only reason why we included it was Brian had reported that in fact we had the results back from the traffic study that was requested and had indicated in fact that there would be a response letter. We still haven't received that response letter, so we wanted to let you have a copy of this email so that you would.
But this is pertaining to.
This is.
Is that the thing, they reduced it to one area, 25?
Right.
Yeah, and what they're saying is, no.
Why? Because they're saying it's 37 miles an hour?
Yes.
And it's put, what, 35 now, right?
35.
So, they're basing it based on how fast people.
Oh, that's how they do this. They make a determination on how fast the traffic moves right now safely, and there are loads to reduce it down past that, so.
That's the same line.
So, this contradicts the email that the gentleman received directly from, who was he?
No, his, the email, he got, said that we could move the location and the sign.
Right.
That's, this is saying you can't change the speed limit.
Well, that's what moving the sign would have effectively done.
Everybody's going 25, they're, come on, that's ridiculous.
I don't agree with this, I don't.
It's, can we move the sign? We can, we can move the sign, but the reason why you're moving the sign is because of its visibility at that location. It's either blocking his visibility or something like that. It isn't like we can move the sign a half mile down the road and change the speed limit. That's not what, what being said.
Okay, all right.
That's disappointing.
Anything else in correspondence?
We have a request from Freedom Transit for financial assistance. You know, the money that Freedom Transit receives is in part related to the contributions that others make to them, and they are requesting that in fact we contribute to them. The City of Washington, South Strabane Township, Sartreers Township, Kitterford, and Euston Boroughs all make a contribution. I had a chance to talk to the manager from South Strabane, and what they contribute to the transit service is $2,000 a year, so I didn't know whether or not.
Did we give them any last year?
We did not, because they didn't give us a request last year. So, I guess my question is for 2021, do you want to make a contribution to the.
Yes.
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 And is $2,000, and South Strabane is doing appropriate? What's appropriate?
$1,000.
Okay.
No, I disagree. $2,000.
I think we should do $2,000. It also asks, though, about possibly working with them to identify stops.
Stops.
And, and I have made calls on this, and I, I will attempt again, because quite honestly, I think they ought to be stopping in this location right here.
Do we have any idea how many township residents actually utilize this service?
I have no idea.
How much do we give to the Venetia Heritage Society? Don't we give that money? How much?
$1,000.
$1,000, which we definitely know benefits the community. And we're going to give the Transit Council $2,000? We have no idea whether anybody uses it? That makes no sense to me.
Well, maybe we should agree to $1,000 and ask them for some data.
I think it ought to be $2,000. I think we ought to give the same thing that's, it's a valuable service. I'm not necessarily sure, you know, necessity to, you know, make it per, cost per resident that uses it. I mean, I, I certainly think we should inquire to see if we have a traffic count, but we're talking $1,000.
But why don't we split it down the middle then, give them $1,500?
No.
I'd still go with the $2,000.
I'd go with $2,000.
All right, we good with that? Two grand?
Do we have a consensus?
I don't think we do, but, all right, two grand.
We do now.
The chairman has spoken.
Maybe we could ask them for some data, please.
Yeah. We could have some data, I agree with that.
Let us know how many people use it. It's, you know, I think they can provide that certainly, and if they would like to stop here where we can actually see it. But let me just say, I, I, especially these times of COVID-19, and, and, you know, people have difficulty getting around, getting places, I mean, it just makes sense. It's not a big amount of money.
The other letter I would point to is from Rich Kovak, Rick Kovak. There are now, again, taps available, we can say that there is authority, district, they have reached an agreement, some kind of agreement to settle the outstanding litigation. I have not seen a copy of that agreement yet. I will attempt to get us a copy so that we can ask for it.
They say how many there would be?
What's that?
They know how many there would be?
How many taps?
How many taps?
You know what? I don't know what the number of taps will be for next year. You know, one of the things that they did, and Ed's followed up on this, we have notified all of the builders in Peters Township, because you can, you know, the taps were frozen, and so they weren't used this year, but you can purchase those right now and use them going forward. So we're encouraging builders and developers in Peters Township to go out and purchase taps.
Well, that's what he's referring to. He's not talking about next year, he's talking about the ones for 2020.
But there's going to be an allocation for next year, so.
I think it would be significant to the builders to know how many there may be, so they can do their planning accordingly.
Well, I think they had 100 to begin with.
This year.
At the beginning of the year, and they didn't sell very many before the ban went into effect.
Anything in minutes from any of the board meetings anybody wants to talk about? Miscellaneous?
I'm thinking in terms of all the visibility we're having with break-ins along the trail, that it might be appropriate to ask Doug to come in and speak to us about that.
He will be here at the next meeting. He has a new police officer he'd like to introduce you to. We have an amendment to the police policy manual, so he's going to be here for that, and...
Maybe he can tell us then that they've apprehended whoever is doing it.
That would be a good thing.
Do we regularly clean the leaves off the trail? I mean, there's a couple of areas that, you know, they can get slippery when they get wet, and there's a couple areas where the leaves are covering the trail.
Let me talk to Joe. I, I tell you, it's probably not something we normally do, but it's not a big problem. They can power them down and do...
Yeah, it wouldn't take much. Okay. Next agenda, items?
Don't leave miscellaneous. You want to speak to...
Glad you...
I told you to remind me.
Just a brief update for council on the rolling hills project. The pavement tie-in will be, not done this week, started this week at each end of the job along East McBorough Road. Been in discussions with Penn Knot this afternoon and Liberoni. The most efficient way to do this is probably, once they make the final tie-ins, which would be a eastbound lane coming towards the municipal building, they'd like to start early on Thursday, and if BB works through Thursday night, just with a continuous operation, just the nature of how they have to bank the curves and, you know, put a level course of asphalt, put a foot thick on the far lane, and time to cool it, and then start over. So once they get the flaggers and everybody out there, they'd like to work with a continuous operation. Penn Knot's okay with it. They're going to give me a solid guess or no tomorrow, but it's looking like Thursday morning, because the weather forecast is for big weather Thursday and Friday, so I just wanted to kind of prep everybody. Once we get the final tomorrow, whether that's going to happen, we'll put it on the website. Because traffic, they have been flagging for a couple days down there, but when they do these transitions, it's going to be particularly...
It'll be one lane.
It'll be one lane, yeah.
And we won't have school, high school traffic this weekend?
Well, and that was, if there's anything positive, you know, to pick up the school issue, it would be, the traffic would be a little harder this week.
So then, would, would the residents would be notified, they'll be working around the clock through the night?
We, there, the, our neighbors across on East McBorough Road, the contractors can take responsibility for that. We're going to try to find out if we can, if there's a way we can put up electronic signs so that, to tell people to stay away from East McBorough Road. We're also going to use our, our ability to generate messy, electronic messages here to be able to let as many people as possible know. But it's probably a place that people will want to stay away from, even if the work is occurring in the evening.
Yeah, great, so they're all going to go down Thomas?
Oh, hey, they all go up through Stonehenge and past my house.
Is there any issue if there would be a fire emergency?
No, because they're going to be able to keep the road open, so it, it's not, you know, anytime we have a, and we've had many on East McBorough Road over the last couple of years, anytime when you have construction on that road, that's a problem because of it's a central position for all emergency services, but they're going to accommodate that, but it would be a challenge.
Okay, two, two other issues. Ed, I know I've talked to you about these. One is, they're both with, with trees growing out, you know, onto the road. Center Church by that, you know, right past the church, you know, the trees are, you know, if you have a wide truck, you're, you're, you're going to hit the trees, and then on, on Thomas Road. I don't understand why we just can't go in there and trim the roads back. They're on, they're on the east, but...
It's in the right way, skate road, yes.
Well, why can't we trim them?
Well, on Thomas Road, that would be the responsibility of the state to do that, and we can certainly notify them and get them out there to do that.
Okay, well, have we notified the state that we'd like them trimmed?
I have not, because this is the first time.
Okay.
But that's not a problem.
It's a dangerous situation, because you can't, it's difficult to walk, if someone wanted to walk along that road, it's difficult, because in that particular stretch, the other side, the road kind of goes...
That was raised some time ago by a resident.
The, the road kind of goes down on the lower side, so it's hard to walk unless you walk into someone's yard, and then on the other side, you can't walk, because those trees are literally, they are inches from the road.
Yeah, we can notify them tomorrow.
Let me understand, on Center Church, it's, you call them trees, I'll call it shrubs.
It's that old house that, that we've had, right, I think, some issues with, and those, and that's a pretty long stretch, too. It goes probably the length of the, the whole lot.
Like a hedge road.
And, and they're even encroaching onto the road more than Thomas.
Well, that one we can take care of.
It's really surprising to find the deer come out from that hedge road, too. You have absolutely no chance to...
No, it's like, there's those hedges on Beavah, right before you turn into Orchard, Woodson Islands.
Orchard Islands.
I was driving down there, and I mean, they're smack, and they're like 10 feet tall, and they're smack up the road, and I mean, a deer just went right, I didn't hit it, but that's a home deer.
Did you have a second thing, Mr. Brooks?
What's that?
Did you have a second thing?
No, no, that was, well, there were two issues.
What are they doing at Valley Brook today? I know you sent me an email about the...
Friday is the...
This Friday's Friday.
I had a couple of questions. On the, on the calendar that came in the docket, it does not indicate the public hearing date for the budget?
Well, it'll be at the next meeting. At the next meeting, we will have a public hearing for the next year's budget. We will also have a public hearing for the budget amendment for this year. Normally, we would have done that already, but because of the Carers Funds, we've been kind of messed up in terms of what's going to be included in that budget amendment, so both of those are occurring at the next meeting.
Do you anticipate people will want to attend?
I, you know, our experience with budget hearings is that we don't get people attending, but if people want to attend, they can.
Okay. At one of the budget workshops, we talked about looking at putting money into the budget for minimum maintenance roads and private roads, or looking at addressing that question. Do we have a plan for when we're going to start having that conversation?
Well, what, where I thought we had left it was, we have an allocation for road improvements next year, and that, I know Mark's preference would be to do this sooner, but the, I think the earliest we're going to really be in a position to be able to do it is that in January of next year, to look at what council's position is with regard to upgrading minimum maintenance roads and on what basis. You know, Mark and I, and in fact, the, the same people that, that you had met with, we, we met with out in the field, if you look at that road, it's a, you know, it's a perfect example of, it's something that obviously needs to be addressed. One of the things that Mark and I were, were brainstorming is that the Washington County Conservation District has a program for low-volume roads. To me, that certainly meets the criteria for a low-volume road that has a water problem.
Well, you and I exchanged emails about something like that a while back. When, when Mr. Currie and I were up there, that was one of the examples. But to me, and I don't know if he would agree, the minimum maintenance in private roads are different than our general road maintenance program. I mean, that's almost like an extra special problem to address.
But the problem is, I understand that, but the problem is there is only so much money to be spent on any one thing, and, and the allocation that's proposed in the budget for, for the road program has increased from, from the prior year, and I, I think the only way to do this prudently is to take these minimum maintenance roads on, not all together, but one at a time over time to do this, because otherwise that expense is going to be tremendous.
Well, and, and Mr. Law, I agree with you that that's probably true, that there's only so much money to go around, but I've made it clear on a number of occasions that I think infrastructure projects are, must do as opposed to need to or would like to do. So, you know, I would rather allocate more money towards these kind of problems than some of the amenities that we're putting the money against, but that's a discussion for all of council. One last thing, if anybody has anything else. Wednesday's Veterans Day, so I'd just like to say thank you to all the veterans out there who have served our country. Thank you very much for your service.
Anything else? Okay. Do we have an executive session?
We do not.
Okay. We're adjourned.